Hey everyone, it's Mike with It's Pittsfield Tonight. I am here with our Pittsfield at-large city councillor Pete White. Pete, thanks for taking the time to do this tonight.
Thanks for having me on.
Absolutely. So this is the first time you've been to the new studio. We had councillor Persip here earlier today and that was his first time. So exciting to have you here. I know we did a bunch of Zooms in the past.
Yeah, it's nice being face-to-face with you and this studio is amazing.
Yeah, the face-to-face thing changes the whole dynamic of it. So this is an election year and you are running for, is this your fifth term or fourth?
It'll be fifth. It'll be going into my fifth at-large, sixth overall.
Oh wow, okay. And so have you officially kicked off for the season?
I don't know if there's official kickoff's anymore. I know some candidates have, you know, an event or something really. When you take out papers and you say you're running, to me that was the kickoff. You know, I'm taking, for me it's a continuation of being a city councillor. It's continuing to talk to people, going to the same events. I try to really not change up my style during an election year.
What about fundraisers and things like that though?
Fundraising is a little tough for me because I'm a state employee. So I'm not allowed to invite anyone directly.
Oh wow.
And I'm also, I'm not allowed to ask for checks, so I have to have my campaign team do all of it. So they're working on some stuff behind the scenes, I hope.
Okay.
So it's always a little different for me, so.
Is it not as, with the city council positions, would you say it's not as, the monetary side of it is big as like running for mayor or something like that?
Definitely not as big as running for mayor. But when you're a first-time candidate, you do have to raise money, get your name out there. If you see a sign that says Peter White on it, I've been using those since 2003. If you see a sign that says Pete White on it, those are from a 2011 campaign. I've done.
Are you using both?
I've used both. The signs need to be replaced this year. They are pretty much toast. I've tried environmentally to get everything out of them as possible I can. You know, if I ran for a different office, I put a sticker over at the bottom. You know, because I try to be green with things. So I've used the same signs just over and over. They've had it, so something has to be done this year.
This year new signs.
Yeah, I need them.
You gonna, you gonna change some things or are you gonna go with the old standby?
I've kind of joked around with some people, I kind of want to do just Pete White for Pittsfield.
Okay.
Because you know, that's why we're in it, we're doing this for Pittsfield and, but you know, it's good to have the name of the office on there, so I may stick with just the Pete White for councillor at-large. But I haven't quite made up my mind on it yet. I might be open to see what people say after, maybe, I know you get a lot of views on this, so maybe I'll get some suggestions.
I'm sure you will. So have you started with the door knocking and all that yet?
Um, I've done door knocking in the past. I may do some, however, I really like just going out, people, seeing people where they're at. Luckily, being in office for so long, I don't necessarily need to introduce myself to everyone. So I have a lot of people who will come up to me at events and, you know, farmer's market, just music events in the area. So I don't know how much just the door knocking I'll do.
Okay.
But I just like to be out there, you know, I like talking to people in grocery stores.
Are there certain things you're hearing more than others or is it just your everyday individual things that, you know, individual residents with issues?
We hear quite a bit about housing in general. You know, homelessness, everything that leads to homelessness. We hear about rentals being too high, housing prices being too high, on top of just every bill possible going up. Definitely hear a lot about that. Public safety is always something and, you know, people do care that our fire department is usually first on scene when anyone calls 911. So they want to make sure that, you know, we continue to support our fire department. You know.
As a city councillor, you know, because you do hear, every now and then you'll see new people coming in, running for office, and they have ideas of things they want to do. But what would you say, and just not the textbook definition, but your personal view of what is the role of a Pittsfield city councillor and how much of some of these ideas can you get done?
Well, the role of city council is definitely to be the legislative branch, to come up with legislation, to review legislation. However, at some point, you also became the liaison between people in city departments. So if someone wants to see something happen, they'll often go to a city councillor to try to get it to happen, whether it's fixing a sidewalk, a road, a tree that needs to come down, a whole host, you know, anything you could imagine.
Would you say that's the bulk of it, that type of infrastructure projects?
The bulk of for ward councillor, which I was lucky to get to see that back in 2010 and 11, you're being contacted about that infrastructure stuff a lot, like things going on in the neighborhood. I get that a little because, you know, at some point along the way, I was dubbed the ward councillor for the city by the Eagle or something.
Okay.
Because I do like to get involved in those issues. At-large, you get a cross-section of all of that. And as an at-large councillor, I've found it's always best to call the ward councillor and just find out if they're already working on it. So you're there in a lot of ways to back up your ward councillors. If they need a little extra help with a project, if they need a little more support behind it, just someone to go out and look at it that's, you know, worked on issues like that before, if they're a new ward councillor.
I mean, but wouldn't you say overall, one of the most important things, at least I feel, is being able to work with the other elected officials?
Yeah, I've, I've been lucky that on most councils that I've served on, the majority, at least seven or eight, I've been able to work really closely with. There's some that haven't wanted to work as closely, some have made it harder than others, but for the most part, yeah. At the end of the day, a city councillor is only as good as the five other councillors. You can convince to vote along with you if it's an issue before the council. A simple majority, you have to get six votes.
Right.
Super majority, you have to be able to get eight votes. So you need to be able to work well enough with seven other people or five other people who are on the council to be able to.
And I would assume you have to have a working relationship with the mayor.
It helps a lot. I've been lucky, I've served under two mayors, or served with two mayors, you're not really under anyone, except the people of Pittsfield. And I've had good relationships with both Jimmy Roberto and Linda Tire.
That's right, you were not a councillor under Mayor Bianchi.
I was not. But Dan Bianchi and I have always had a decent relationship. We see each other at The Soda Chef and different places around town.
I love The Soda Chef, by the way, it's a great place.
Love stopping in there. But yeah, we could talk about just the restaurants and everything around here forever, but that's also part of being a city councillor, is supporting local businesses.
Absolutely.
I try to, you know, for the, for the amount we get paid for doing it, I try to put it all back into the community. It's, it comes down to about $20 a day.
I would say with you, at least, because I've mentioned many times that if you want to know the best place to eat in Pittsfield, it has to be White.
It's because I do try to, you know, be out there and it's kind of my whole thing with not wanting to do as much door-to-door. I try to be, you know, I've always used approachable, accessible, dedicated to Pittsfield. But if you see me at a restaurant enough, people know that they can come up to me and talk to me.
I think the business owners really appreciate that too though, because I even, from doing this now, I go into places and often I'll have an owner come out and it's, it's really flattering and nice and they're just happy to see that you're there supporting their business. So I think for elected officials, that is a huge thing.
It is, and you know, I've loved some of your videos with like Pittsfield Rye and, you know, the.
The making of the bread and stuff, I love those too.
And that chocolate bread, you know, I can, I'm always really happy if I go to the Biggie and I go to their table and I'm like, hey, that's from Pittsfield.
Yeah, Pittsfield Rye is awesome.
Yeah. You know, all the videos you've done with the different, you know, Designer Consignor really like going down there.
Amy at Designer Consignor has been one of my biggest supporters from day one. She's awesome.
Yeah, and in the underground, she just has one of the coolest shops.
Absolutely.
But I think as a city councillor, if you're going to support legislation, you also have to be out there and talking to business owners and talking to the people who shop in their places, to be able to know, okay, what's going on, not just at that store, but the neighborhood around it and different conditions that could make it easier for them to do business.
What do you think then, you know, because I mentioned this to councillor Persip today, that this year it looks like in the council races, I think there's what, four wards that are uncontested?
I think we'll still see what it shakes out to be. People still can take their papers from the voter, registry voter's office to the city clerk's office to be on the ballot.
But they do have to have been submitted already.
Yeah, they have to be submitted and they have to already have the right number of signatures. So for the wards, they have to at least have 50.
Okay.
So if they have 50 certified as registered voters, they can take them over to the clerk's office. We'll know that soon. I forget exactly what the date is.
What do you think though, the reluctance and apathy, what do you think is going on? Because it does seem like less and less people are wanting to get involved. And if some of the incumbents weren't running for reelection, what would happen?
I think, you know, we've seen it in some of our hill towns, some of the surrounding, our partners in the Berkshires have had races where no one was contested.
Yes.
So somebody took out papers just so somebody would be there. I think you'll have somebody to step up, but I think it's better, like I think it's great that we have seven people who look like we're going to have in the at-large race.
That, I'm glad too, because it, for a while there, it was looking like nothing was gonna happen and that was concerning. Concerning as to what might be causing that.
I think what's causing it is there's some nastiness out there and there are times where, you know, somebody will come to Open Lake and it seems kind of bad, but some of the stuff you read, some of the stuff people will say to you from behind a keyboard is really nasty. People don't want to put their families through that. People don't want to put themselves through that. You know, we need to have civil debate. You know, I can disagree with someone and still want to, you know, go to the park, you know, on a Saturday with them and talk about an issue or go see, yeah, that sidewalk definitely needs fixing, what can we do together?
I think it's the responsibility of everyone, every public figure, to make sure that you're not tearing other things apart to try to get a message out there, because when you're doing that, you're just ripping apart things in the community. I learned from doing this, if you're not bringing something positive, then it is negative.
Yeah, and there are times where, you know, people have said, oh, did you hear what Mike said about you? I said, no, I heard what Mike said about an issue that we were discussing and we had a difference of opinion on the issue, but you've never torn me apart as a person.
No, and likewise.
Right, but some issues that I've taken up, you know, we disagreed on how it, how it should have gone or how it could have gone. You know what? Some of my favorite councillors that I've served with, I disagreed with them often and they changed my minds on some things. I don't want.
It can get emotional though, wouldn't you say? I mean, you get, you get into something and it's sometimes if too much emotion can get in there, you start fighting and you get caught up in that fight.
I try, you know, there have been some recent times where people have said I've seemed a little more animated, a little angrier, only because of how much I care about the issue and how much I know it would affect the people of Pittsfield. I never try to make it personal though with another councillor. You know, I never want to leave a meeting where a councillor thinks I attacked them. I can disagree with them on the issues, you know, same as, as soon as we get together off-air, we talk about music and everything. I want to be able to say, how's your family doing? I want to be able to say, you know, hey, how's the car running?
Well, because ultimately, if people don't step up like yourself, and somebody has to step up to run for these positions, and if you put too much negativity out there, it's, we're gonna lose, it's gonna hurt everyone. And I do think that that, I mean, you hit the nail on the head. There is social media and just online platforms over the past 10, 15 years have changed things. And I think we need to focus on the positive side of it, getting people to volunteer for things, getting people to feel good about being involved in a campaign. And like you want to see kids at the end of a baseball game shake hands, you want to see candidates shake hands and not say, you're my enemy and I'm coming to get you next time.
Yeah, we don't need any of that. We don't need name-calling. You know, I, if we're in council chambers or if we're at City Hall, you know, it's always Mayor Tire, Mayor Roberto, councillor. You know, I try never to like reduce someone to, you know, just saying like a last name or anything like that. I just think there's a respect level in there, but, you know, online, I think we do need to like dial back the hatred and, you know, name-calling that goes on. And I'm basically considered the Facebook councillor.
Absolutely, I would say that.
A lot of people come to my Facebook page to find out, okay, has trash been delayed? Or, you know, when is this gonna happen or, you know, what's going on with that? And I like that people get ahold of me. It's an easy way to communicate with a lot of people. If somebody calls me and I call them back, which I try to always do, disagree with them or not, I've talked to one person. If I answer something on Facebook or a little bit with Instagram, it's a little bit more difficult, but if I answer them on social media, I might have answered 100 people.
Right.
And you really put it out there transparently to, to not be having the discussions just through Messenger. And I think, you know, I learned a lot from Mike Ward, former Ward 4 councillor.
He's great.
On that, you know, because he was one of the first people to adopt social media and having like a web presence and everything. And I, you know, learned tremendous amount from him of just, you know, answer people right on your page. Don't say that they have to message you or anything like that, because then you help more people who might have had the question. Because when somebody contacts you, regardless of how long you've been in, the first thing they say is, I didn't want to bother you with this. And I try to tell everyone, if I'm bothered by it, I shouldn't be running for city council. I'm doing this so you can ask me the question, so I can help people just understand the process a little bit more, because I think that's where anger comes from, not understanding the process.
Do you see it heading in that direction where we can finally get away from, I look at it as the old-school way in politics. Yes, it's happened everywhere. You can find references from small towns to big cities throughout the entire country where you're gonna hear the same terminology's used about politicians, all that. And I do feel like there's a momentum shift in politics, because people are burnt, they're getting burnt on that. It's too much negativity.
And it's a constant election cycle.
Yes.
You know, it's municipal, it's state, it's federal. You never get a year off from politics. And I know I try to joke that I hope to never become a politician. I want to be an elected official and people will say, well, what's the difference? Like a politician's gonna tell you what you want to hear.
Right.
An elected official will tell you what's really going on. And I've been torn up by people for saying, no, I don't know if that'll work, because we've done this and this, I'm willing to try.
Do you see yourself running for another office or do you?
Not at this point. I ran for state rep back in 2011 and I'm glad I got the experience. It was my first time knocking on doors citywide, talking to people about a wider breadth of issues. You know, for me, I really care a lot about union issues, making sure people get, you know, fair contracts and, you know, whenever one of the local unions go out on strike or in a contract dispute or just negotiating a new contract, I want to be there to support them, because I think that's extremely important for them to know.
I saw you up at, what stand, we did that standout for the.
BIU, CWA.
Yes.
Yeah, things like that. You know, currently, I'm not sure, I heard something, you know, even the UPS workers. You know, what happens with unions is so important to what happens with wages for everyone else, what happens with healthcare for everyone else. Unions really set the bar. And I learned that early on. My dad, you know, wasn't a union member, but my mom was part of the school system back in the day and I got to see a lot of things. But then I got to walk the picket lines out at Berkshire Gas, I think it was 2001, for their lockout.
I remember that.
Going and talking to the people of why it was important enough for them to go out on strike, you know, being locked out, you know, why is it important enough to fight for a fair contract to make sure that, you know, not only can you provide for your family, but so your union siblings can also provide for their families. So you're setting the bar of how far a company can go to push you down. And, you know, those are some of the values that I learned early on in, you know, this.
Do you feel as a councillor, doing this, you've been able to get some things accomplished that you wanted to?
Yeah, there's definitely, sometimes it's more incremental, but, you know, we have been working harder to make sure that city employees are paid fairly, so that we don't have city employees who are paid less than minimum wage, because that's where their contract was at. And I think with, you know, Director Taylor, he's brought a lot of things forward to make it so if you're working for the city of Pittsfield, you're not being paid less than, you know, what some people in more entry-level positions are at. There are no low positions in my mind. It's like everything makes the community work.
Right.
Every position is important and I wish every position got paid a, a living wage.
One big thing that, you know, is talked about a lot, especially the past few years, is when the budget for the police department is discussed. And this is something, again, I mentioned with councillor Persip, about seeing a lot of people with these social ideas, they're almost like they run for city council or city government as a social activist. And again, I don't agree that the city council's a place for that, but when you're, as councillors, discussing the budget, the, when we're talking about the police department, that seems to have some of that.
The police department.
Social ideology attached to it.
The police department is the hardest budget to talk about, because there always are the national issues that invade the municipal sphere.
Now, I know we're paying, we did start paying, I believe, our officers a little bit better, didn't they?
We're trying to get it up there. You know, people just see the overall number of what the police department gets as a whole. A lot of times there are things reported on about how much an officer makes, not their base salary, but how much they make with road details and other things that they're allowed to do.
Right.
The city's not paying them, but when, you know, budget or when wage numbers get reported, it seems to be factored in there. And a lot of those are paid by the road jobs.
Absolutely, they're paid by Eversource, they're paid by Spectrum, they're.
So that gets mixed in there, but it's difficult to, to argue, you know, for or against that budget. You know, people want to see it shrank, you know, they want to see it, like less money go to it, but people want someone to show up when they call 911.
We also have issues, like I think downtown needs beat cops. I mean, I, they do. I mean, I was on the sidewalk today, I told you, and it was an unbelievable situation that it actually, that it happened to me. I couldn't believe it. I don't even say it on camera.
But no, but I go back and forth with that, because, you know, if you go with statistics, downtown is the safest neighborhood. But if you go with perception, a beat cop could make the area be perceived so much differently.
Absolutely.
And I would love to see the sidewalk ordinance of you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk, you can't skateboard on the sidewalk. I want to see that enforced, because I'd like to see them in the bike lanes.
Well, that's the, I think, one of the things that gets to people with that project.
It's not enforced.
I'm gonna, just so everyone's gonna say we didn't, I said this in the last video with Earl, I did, that I didn't ask you any tough questions. So I will be, and I'm gonna invite you now, I'm gonna be doing some debates for at-large. Would you be willing to participate in those?
Of course.
Okay. So the questions that a lot of you are gonna want to hear, that's where those will be asked. This is the first time Pete has been in the new studio and I really wanted this to be a casual conversation, so that's what this is. I did ask Earl what his favorite color was, so that was kind of cool. What's your favorite color, Pete? Or do you have one?
It changes kind of based on my mood. A lot of times it's orange. I just like the brightness of it, maybe it's the, like, going back to memories of my dad, like, went hunting.
Yeah.
He'd wear the, you know, the bright orange. I've even got the, so, because I like doing some hikes in the woods and certain times of the year you need it, so I've always liked like the neon orange, but, you know, or blue or red.
You know what's cool about the history of that? And this is just side information, I guess, I get off track sometimes, but when my father worked for the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, one of the guys working for the state out east did some research and found out that this color orange was not seen by the animals, but would be able to stick out for hunters. And they did all these tests and that was discovered by a state of Massachusetts employee and.
That's cool.
I believe he might have trademarked it, he might have got his out of it, but it was an actual state of Massachusetts employee who discovered that.
I look forward to a future video from you on that. Maybe you can find somebody who worked with them or something, because.
It'd be somebody related to them now, probably, but I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah, definitely.
I can tell the smoke is starting to come back, it's getting in my lungs. So.
It's amazing though, how something as far away as Canadian wildfires affect us here. And to me, it makes the world seem a little bit smaller, that.
It's kind of scary too.
Something that far away can have an impact.
It's definitely scary. And the mosquito thing is, you know, I'm right near the water, so, oh my God, but everyone's near the water now, it rains so much, so.
And that's definitely when we do the debates, that'll be another hot topic issue.
Absolutely, there's gonna be some great things to talk about. They're all gonna be things that you guys have been discussing on the council. But I do want to thank you for taking the time to do this, it's, we could sit here and talk all night. But as far as your campaign page and a way for people to get in touch with you, that's all up and going?
Yeah, I have a Re-elect Pete White page that my campaign team monitors. I'm not allowed to even be an admin on it.
Okay.
Because it might touch into fundraising.
Okay. Are you the only one on the council with that issue?
I might be now that councillor Lampiazi.
Oh, that's right.
She was a state employee, so I know she, we've commiserated about it a few times and when councillor Moon was working for the state for a little while. I know now director of finance, Kerwood, when he was councillor, Kerwood had the constraint on him, so he had a good campaign committee. I've always.
That definitely creates a challenge.
I definitely could use some more campaign volunteers that want to work on the nuts and bolts of campaigns, but a lot of times I've been involved in campaigns that have not been as heated.
Now, will they, can they reach out to you directly or through, to your campaign page?
They can reach out to my campaign page, but if somebody wants to connect with me, I, you know, PeteWhite78 on most platforms, definitely on Facebook. I've got a councillor-at-large Facebook page that if somebody doesn't want to see where I'm going to dinner, if they don't want to see pictures of my puppy, they can go to that, you know, Pete White councillor-at-large page and follow that and it's got all the city updates and things that are pertinent to the government position. My own personal Facebook page is gonna have everything to what music I'm going to see, to like everything I'm promoting or doing.
Will you be doing an official kickoff or no? It's just.
At this point, you know, I don't want to say yes or no. I think it's kicked off, it would be more like a continuing running.
Okay.
You know, it's like.
But no event, like an official event?
If I have an event, the campaign team would put it together and I'd be more like a guest at it.
All right, well, you'll have to let me know if they do.
Well, they would have to let you know. I can't even tell people.
Oh, well, tell them to let me know.
Right, because if I have a fundraiser, I'm not allowed to ask anyone to attend it.
Oh my God, that's crazy.
If I have an event, even if it was a no-dollar event, like just invite people to do a meet and greet, I cannot collect any campaign contributions for that day.
Wow.
So nobody can slip an envelope to any of my campaign people, anything else. You know, so I have to send people to Esther Anderson, who's my treasurer.
Okay.
If they want to, you know, even know about anything like that. So it is a constraint, but you know, I love being able to connect with people, help them understand government a little. You know, I was kind of a policy wonk when I was at BCC, I'm the Student Government Association. I really learned parliamentary procedure, even though it was Robert's rules there and it's Demeter's on the city council. I enjoy when government is able to help people, you know. We've talked about it before, I got an elevator put in by working with a group of people out of BCC. You know, we got the elevator in the Jonathan Edwards Library.
So for issues, everyone can contact you directly still, but for anything to donate or anything like that, it has to be through the campaign page?
Yes.
Okay, so definitely to all you Pete supporters, again, you can reach out to him through his personal page, but if you want to volunteer or be part of his campaign, his, what is it, elect Pete White for city council at large?
I think it's Re-elect Pete White. But if you type in Pete White on Facebook.
You'll find it.
Yeah, I can share it, I just can't be on it.
Okay. So thank you again to all of you out there. There will be some at-large debates coming up. There'll be another mayoral debate coming up first, which I'll be reaching out to the candidates on that.